Well, good evening all. The City of Eureka's Planning Commission Regular Meeting of Monday, October 9th, 2023, is now in session. It is Indigenous Peoples Week, and so we would like to start with a land acknowledgement. I'm going to ask Commissioner Freitas to do that for us.
Sure, I'd be happy to. So, the City of Eureka's land acknowledgement reads, "The land that Eureka rests on is known in the Wiat language as Jarogigi. Past actions by local, state, and federal governments remove the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threaten to destroy their cultural practices. The City of Eureka acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement demonstrates the city's commitment to dismantling the ongoing legacies of settler colonialism." And also, fun fact, I believe Jarogigi in the Wiat language means the place where we sit and rest. That's what I learned recently. Something along those lines.
Thank you, Commissioner Freitas. Let's move on to roll call.
Commissioner Lazar? Commissioner Freitas?
Present.
Commissioner Benson?
Present.
Commissioner Kraft?
Here.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lazar, will you lead us in the salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're moving to, well, actually, before we approve the minutes, yeah, no, we'll go right to that. Approval of the minutes for the last meeting. I'm assuming that commissioners have had a chance to have a look at it, and I'm ready to hear a motion to pass those meeting minutes.
So moved.
So moved, a second?
I'll second.
Are there any comments or revisions on the meeting minutes of the last meeting? Okay, let's move it then to a vote for approval. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
No? And abstentions, none? So, so moved. Approved. Okay. I just want to take this moment to welcome students from Cal Poly Humboldt in the Environmental Conflict Resolution class, and then a couple of students from the Intro to Planning class. This, in Part D of our agenda, is, it's a section for the meeting that provides the commissioners and the public the opportunity to address the commission on any topic that's not on tonight's agenda. So it's an un-agendaized topic, and if you'd like to speak to us, you're welcome to come to the mic and do so. Anybody out there like to address the commission on any topic whatsoever? Okay, anybody online like to address the commission on any topic not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, I'll put it back to the commissioners. Anybody? Okay, it looks like we're moving right through that into public hearings that are new, and so we have the Joy Holland Dance and Massage Studio application. I believe we're going to hear a staff report on that tonight. Go ahead, thank you.
Senior Planner Savage will be presenting on this.
This evening, we have an application from Joy Holland, Doing Business as Joy Emporium, for a conditional use permit and coastal development permit for a small dance studio and massage studio at 221st Street. Here is the general project location. Zooming in, the red rectangle shows the property location. The subject parcel is located in the middle block between C and D Streets on the north side of Second Street. The property can be accessed from both Second Street and Snug Alley. Here's the storefront, looking north from Second Street. The applicant is not proposing any exterior changes to the building. The building is on the Local Register of Historic Places, and any exterior changes would require approval from the Historic Preservation Commission. A condition has been added requiring the applicant apply for Historic Preservation Commission approval if any changes to the exterior are proposed in the future. Here's the proposed floor plan. Under Joy Emporium's proposal, the rear approximately 300 square feet of the building will be used for Thai Massage, Certified YTT Yoga, and pole dancing instruction, all by owner Joy Holland. There will be two poles for dance and a space to practice movement and yoga. The Thai massage is done by appointment only on a mat on the floor, which can be rolled up and set aside during art shows. The dance and movement classes are private and typically one-on-one sessions, but may host up to a maximum of five people. There will also be art throughout the back section. In the storefront, there will be an art gallery and an artist workspace, with house plants and art displays in the windows, and vintage couch and coffee table with portfolios of the artist's work. The public can come in anytime during business hours to watch the artist work. The hours will be Tuesday through Thursday, 12 to 5:30, and Friday, Saturday, 2 to 10. Those are approximate hours. They may change, but they'll be open every day for business hours. Beyond the storefront, in the middle section of the building, on the east wall, there will be floor-to-ceiling art-hung salon style. The west wall has a restroom for employees only with no changes proposed. There will also be a countertop with prints, stickers, et cetera, for sale. In addition, there will be wall space dedicated to Black Humboldt. The owner will be the only full-time employee. The site has a core retail commercial land use designation and is zoned waterfront commercial and is located in the coastal zones. Coastal zone. Dance studios and massage in the CW Zone District require a conditional use permit, and since the site is located in the coastal zone, the conditionally permitted use also requires a CDP. In contrast, the art gallery use is principally permitted and requires neither a CUP nor a CDP. However, the proposed additional use of the space for a gallery is crucial to finding consistency with the land use designation and zoning. Therefore, a condition has been added requiring that as long as the building is occupied by dance and massage studio uses, there must be a visitor-serving component, such as the proposed art gallery that is regularly open for drop-in visitors and customers. As condition, the proposed uses will be consistent with the core retail commercial land use designation and waterfront commercial zoning. As described in the staff report, staff believes the necessary findings can be made to approve the CUP and CDP for the dance studio and massage studio. Therefore, staff recommends you hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution finding the project is exempt from CEQA and approving with conditions. When you're ready, I can provide the suggested motion, and I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll turn it over to the commission for any questions.
Just before we get started, I wanted to say, I think I met the applicant briefly during Friday Night Market. We didn't have an extensive discussion about the project, but I just wanted to disclose ex parte before we got started.
I just have a quick question. I might have missed this in the staff report, but why will they be open so late on Fridays and Saturdays? What kind of activities are proposed to go that late into the evening?
I think those, the later hours are specifically for when there would be Arts Alive or Friday Night Markets, things like that.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to be sure I understand well. So it's because this is in the coastal zone that we're having to review it, and so it's not, and just the art gallery is principally permitted, but dance, studio, and massage needs an additional review? Is that, am I hearing you correctly?
Yes, they need a conditional use permit.
Just out of curiosity, what is it about dance and massage that requires additional review?
It's all, it was all set up, you know, a long time ago in the coastal code. I'm not sure if we're going to eventually change it or loosen it in the future. Kristin might be able to let you know.
It's the Coastal Act's priority on visitor-serving uses. So an art gallery is considered visitor-serving, and a dance studio or massage studio isn't. And that's why they made it, those two conditional. We would hope to get those to be principally permitted in the future, and we'll attempt that in our comprehensive update.
So there's some assumption being made that tourists don't want to take a dance class or get a massage, but they do want to go to an art studio? And only local people want to get a massage or take a dance class?
Yes.
Okay.
I guess I just, I mean, Kristin, you have a lot of familiarity from your time before coming here with the Coastal Commission. So I guess, from my experience working in planning, you know, these goals are built into the Coastal Act from its foundation, right? Like, they were goals of trying to provide access to the coastal zone for people that were disenfranchised. So it's sort of a component of everyone's local coastal plan that you have to try to deal with that issue, and that often materializes in the assemblage of uses you plan for in the zones. But is there any kind of findings that are unique, or that you've seen in the past in other jurisdictions, or when the Coastal Commission takes up matters like this where they're trying to make the findings for allowing some balance of visitor-serving with non-visitor serving?
I like the way Half Moon Bay did it, and they recently got their LCP, LUP updated, comprehensively updated. They focus on performance standards rather than specific uses. So for them, it's like whether it generates pedestrian foot traffic, whether it's got, you know, it's interesting for pedestrians to look at from the windows, that kind of thing, versus whether it's massage or art.
Makes a lot of sense to me, especially in that part of Old Town, you know, having pedestrian activity and just people on the street makes a lot of sense. So I'm happy to hear that's the direction we're going. I think that's definitely the right tact to be taking.
Can we, oh, sorry, I just had a question about interior changes. Is there, can you characterize, you might have gone over it, but is there any substantial improvements that will be occurring as part of this?
There's no improvements, with the exception that there are, right now, two dressing rooms, I think, with three-quarter walls, so not floor-to-ceiling, and the plan is to eventually remove those, but that's it.
Okay, thanks.
I noted earlier today, we got several letters of support via email. Any, any resistance, any letters against, anything like that?
No letters against at all.
Is the applicant here tonight to speak on behalf of this project or to answer questions?
I am here. Sorry, I didn't know if I should unmute or not, but I'm here.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Do any commissioners have any questions for the applicant? Okay, I think I would like to see that motion then, please.
I need to take comment.
From the public, after, before the motion. Okay. Before we see that motion, let's hear from, hear commentary from the public, and let's start with people online tonight. Anybody online wish to make comments on this proposed project? Okay, seeing none, anybody in chambers wish to make comments on this project? Okay, I guess we're ready to see that motion then.
Okay, public comment closed. Let me share.
I would be happy to make this motion. It seems like it's going to be a great new tenant in that space, especially since good relations will be moving right up the street. And it looks like they've got some, some good gals in their corner, some other good business, business gals, willing to write recommendations, so happy to see a new business going in here. "I move the Planning Commission adopt a resolution finding the project is exempt from CEQA and conditionally approving a conditional use permit and coastal development permit to allow dance and massage studio uses at 223 Second Street."
I'm happy to second that.
Okay, assuming that the misspelling will be corrected. We'll, we'll, any other discussion?
Yeah, I just still say, you know, it seems to me like we do see this situation fairly regularly, which just kind of speaks to that code tightness in our code. And we don't have a lot of real, other than the generic findings applicable for use permits, we don't have any specific guidance beyond sort of our own judgment. So I think the thing that gives me comfort is that there's not going to be a change in any of the interior in such a way that would frustrate future reoccupancy, and it seems like a balance of uses that makes sense and could complement each other, so.
Any other comments from the commission? Okay, let's put it to the vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? None? Abstentions? None? The project is approved. Thank you, Senior Planner Savage, for bringing this to us, and Joy Holland, best wishes on your new business. Okay, next on our agenda tonight is an update of the bylaws, and I believe that staff will be presenting on this for us.
Yes, I prepared a quick presentation. I thought it'd be a good opportunity to review some of the key parts of the bylaws. Did I share my screen? That's why I can't do two things at once. What precipitated this is that the Committees, Commissions, and Boards section of the Eureka Municipal Code just got amended to change how decisive votes are, are done, so, but then we took the opportunity to propose a bunch of changes to just try to make the bylaws more concise, and a few other things, like going from Roberts Rules of Order to Rosenberg's Rules of Order, because they're much shorter, and I have copies of them if any commissioner wants one. So, quorum for the Planning Commission is three of five, so we need three of five of us, of the commissioners present, to, to have a meeting where we make, you take action on things. And this is a reminder that when we email out the meeting agenda, it'd be helpful if everybody remembers to RSVP and let us know whether you're attending or not, so we know whether we're going to have a quorum. And it's critical that we don't take action on anything unless it's on the agenda that gets noticed ahead of the meeting. All right, so our existing voting procedures are that we need a majority vote of all the commissioners, so that would mean we always need three votes. No matter how many commissioners are here, we need three of five of you to vote in the same direction to approve a motion. So if we get a 2-1 vote, the motion fails. The proposed voting procedure is that it's going to be a majority vote of all members in attendance required. So that means if three commissioners are present, a motion would pass with a 2-1 vote. Simple majority. Our bylaws make it clear that if there's a change, a change in bylaws requires a majority of all, all commissioners. Certain votes require all commissioners, but just general, you know, votes on projects will, it'd be a simple majority of those in attendance. Also, right now, our bylaws read that if there's a failure to obtain a decisive vote, it isn't a denial of the project. It means that no action is taken, and the project's continued to the next agenda. And that can get tricky, because maybe if we get a 2-2 vote, it's because two commissioners are very certain that this project can't be approved, and the other two are very certain it should be, and no matter how many meetings we continue to, to reexamine it, we might never get to three votes in one direction. And we have the Permit Streamlining Act that says, you know, once we receive a complete application and we've made a determination that a project's exempt from CEQA, we're supposed to take action within 60 days. So we don't want to create a situation where we're stuck in, and it's also just not good for the applicants and our customer service. So we're changing it so that failure to obtain a decisive vote is the equivalent of denying the project. So if, if there's a 2-2 vote, that means, in favor of a project, that means we're not approving the project. Unless there's, you know, the people that voted against it, one of them, one of those commissioners decides to make another motion. I'm seeing questions. And Attorney Black was going to be here, but I don't, I did not see him on Zoom.
I feel like I've seen this in action before, but is it, is it a motion to reconsider, or is it like an amendment to the prior motion with the seconders?
Yeah, you can make a, a motion to, if you, if the, if somebody who is voting against has changed their mind, you know, you can make a mo, let's wait, let's get Commissioner Black here, and he'll explain all of the different scenarios that could happen.
Sure.
Because I don't want to misspeak. But yeah, there's.
I have, yeah, kind of a similar question and looking wait for, for legal counsel, but if the Planning Commission did not want to approve the project and did not want to deny the project outright, if they wanted to table it and request additional information, they could still make that motion, right?
Right. Vote to, you can, a commissioner can make a motion to continue.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that was still going to be an option if we make this change.
So, the whole majority vote of all members in attendance is a little tricky because of abstentions and recusals. So a commissioner who abstains is in attendance. You're just voting present, you're not voting yea or nay on a motion. Whereas if a commissioner recuses themselves because they have a conflict of interest, they're leaving their room and they're not in attendance. So abstention because of this counts as a no vote. So for example, if there's three commissioners present, two vote for the motion, one votes no, then two of three in attendance voted for it, so the motion passes. Whereas if four commissioners are present, two vote yes, one votes no, and one abstains, that means that only two of four commissioners in attendance voted for it, and that's not a majority of those in attendance, so it fails. So it's important to remember that owning property within 500 feet of a project that's coming before the commission is a conflict of interest, and you have to recuse yourself. And we can make a buffer map of your property in GIS if you want one, if you just send me your address or addresses, I can do that for you. And it's also really helpful when you RSVP in attendance that you also let us know if you already know you're, you have a conflict of interest with any of the projects, because sometimes we might not have a quorum for a particular project, and we'd want to let the applicant know ahead of time if we know that. And then, so right when the agenda item's called, that's the time to publicly identify the conflict of interest, specifically like what the conflict is, and say you're recusing yourself, and leave the room. And then, because we only have five people, we really encourage commissioners to vote unless they're legally disqualified. You can abstain, but we just encourage you not to. And then, the last thing I wanted to touch on is the actions you're taking on use permits and coastal development permits and other things are quasi-judicial, so you're applying existing rules in the zoning code and general plan to a specific case. So you're in the role of a judge. So it's really important that our decisions here are linked to the applicable approval criteria. So that's why in the staff report, we always try to make it clear, what are the required findings for that permit? Because the commission reviews so many different permits. Inland coastal, there's a lot of different required findings depending on the permit, so it's important to find that part of the staff report and make your determination. If it meets those approval criteria, approve. If it could meet the approval criteria with the imposition of conditions, then conditionally approve. And if you can't find a way to make it consistent, that's when you deny. So we're not arbitrarily deciding based on how we feel, it's based on the criteria. And conditions are only imposed if they're necessary to bring a project into consistency with approval criteria, or we put conditions on there to remind, to alert the applicants to things that they're already required to do, like heads up, you need a building permit and a sign permit. And then we have to, based on case law, we have to adopt written findings or verbal articulating reasons for the decision based on the evidence and the record, in order to be transparent and consistent, and to help us avoid getting sued or have a legal defense if we get sued. So it's really important if the Planning Commission goes a different direction than staff, because we've prepared draft written findings, but if the Planning Commission decides to add a condition or change the recommendation on the mic to link that change to the approval criteria and the evidence and the record and why that's needed, which you all have done a great job of just reminding us. Also, it's critical not to indicate your vote until the hearing is closed, because you're, again, you're, you're acting like a judge. You need to hear all the evidence before forming an opinion, and that's why before the public, before public comment, you're just asking clarifying questions and not giving your opinion. And then also announcing ex parte communications at the beginning of the hearing. Again, that's so that everybody knows all the evidence that a decision is based on, and it's all fully disclosed. But it's, that's not necessary for generally available information. So for example, if a commissioner had a private site visit with the applicant, that would need to be disclosed, but if the commissioner just drove and parked out on the street and looked at the property, that's something anybody could do, so you don't need to disclose that. And that's it for my presentation, and the motion is to amend the bylaws per staff's recommendation.
Thank you for that presentation. And I really appreciated the amended bylaws in the track changes version, so we could see what, what had changed when reviewing this. First, open it up to the commission for any additional questions. For Director Kenyon?
I have two. You actually answered the big one, which was the quorum vote to majority vote. For clarity, who, who is the executive secretary?
The planning director for the Planning Commission.
Okay.
Yeah, until I assign it to somebody else.
All right, I thought that would be the answer. This isn't exactly about the change to the bylaws, but it is about recusals. What is the logic for having the commissioner leave the room altogether? I mean, I can certainly envision places where the commissioner is an applicant, or is supportive, or is a neighbor who's supportive. Is that about undue influence, or what? I can see recusing from the vote, leaving the dais, but I have never understood getting kicked out of the room entirely.
Right. I can send you the provisions of state law that talk about it. I can send you the provisions of state law that talk about it, but it's, you're recusing yourself as a member of the commission. And so there are certain opportunities for you to come back in the room as the applicant or, yeah, you just have to announce that you, your role has changed and that's what you're doing. But the reason that you don't just sit in the back of the room is because people have been, have gotten in trouble for making faces, you know, and, and just silently influencing the proceedings.
Okay.
So it's for your benefit.
That actually sounds pretty sensible to me, so I appreciate that. And, and I would also appreciate it, and I noticed you looked right at me when you said, "Don't express an opinion before the hearing is closed." Just keep like, the reminders are appreciated.
I guess I noticed that there seemed to be a requirement, or the language around public speakers at hearings, providing their personal information and identifying themselves. Is that, did I read that correctly, that that's a, a change that over the current practice where they're not obligated to announce who they are?
No, I, that language just got moved up. And it says they're requested but not required to furnish their name and city of residence. That's old language. I don't know if we even do that, but we could take that out in the future too, if we don't even want that. But it's basically saying they don't need to.
Okay. Sorry, I must have misread it, I think. Okay. Yeah, I don't have any other question.
All right, I've, I've got a couple, since I had time to review the, the changes. I'm in Article 3, 4.6. I understand that we've now moved away from a supermajority of three to five and it's now, it's possible to have a simple majority of, of two out of three. Guess I want to just kind of revisit, why were, why was the original goal of having five members? You know, was that, was that chosen in terms of having, spreading representation and diverse interests? And I guess my philosophical question around it is, is by allowing a simple majority, are we, are we sort of having, you know, brain drain or a less democratic process by allowing fewer of us to, to make decisions? And is this acceptable in many other cities? I'm just curious how some other cities have dealt with these numbers and a reduction in numbers to approve projects.
Yeah. I, five members of the Planning Commission is very common. We're in charter cities, so I don't know if there's any law provision about the number of planning commissioners.
Your mic is turned off. Thank you. Sorry. Yeah, so that's, it's pretty common to have five. I don't see, we would just have to change our, Eureka Municipal Code says that there's five planning commissioners, so if we wanted more, we would do that. I know we struggle, the city struggles to find people to, to be on committees and commissions because, as you know, it's a huge dedication of time for no money. And so I think that's part of the reason that five is typical. Historic prez is seven. And yeah, I understand your concern about having, you know, is two people enough to make a decision? But for the city attorney and I, we're more concerned about meeting the Permit Streamlining Act deadline. And I think it's important to remember that everything that goes to the Planning Commission is appealable to city council. So regardless of your decision, it's not the end for somebody who feels like they didn't get a fair shake.
For that response, that's satisfactory to me. And I realize that the, that the simple majority is really sort of our rainy day clause, you know, just to keep business moving. It's not going to be the norm, you know, per se. And if it becomes the norm, maybe it's something we revisit once we've seen a history of that. Can you remind me, because, you know, going through the bylaws is always like, oh, I've been doing everything wrong, haven't I? Can you remind me of the difference between a public hearing and other business and when, when I should ask for testimony versus comment?
Oh, gosh. I don't think it matters if you call it testimony or comment, but certain things are required to have a public hearing and they're noticed as a public hearing. And so we put it under public hearing and those definitely require a public comment. Stuff like the bylaws don't necessarily require a public comment, but we always seem to do it at Planning Commission and it's not, there's no reason not to do it. And it seems to be working for us on every item, so.
What I've noticed by being at the dais is that it seems like applicants give testimony and then the public gives comments. Is that, am I on the right track there? Or not necessarily?
I, I will put this in my list of things to ask the attorney.
I did see something. Did, did we have a 24-hour notice requirement that we're now finally fixing to align with the Brown Act? I saw some language about 72 hours posting.
Regular meetings are 72 hours, special meetings are 24 hours.
So they've always been 72 in our bylaws?
Correct.
Okay, sorry. I just did not read it very closely.
A question for Attorney Black might, might be, I'm just looking at Article 7, Section J. I mean, you know, that we have this ability to either approve, conditionally approve, deny, or continue. And you, and you gave us a good understanding of what it means to conditionally approve. I'm just wondering if, if conditionally approving projects, does that put us in higher liability in general?
Oh, then outright denying them if?
Or, or taking them without, without applying conditions, approving them as, as recommended.
I will ask.
Well, I think it's worth noting that I don't think we ever approve things without conditions. I think they always have some form of conditions. We just may not have ones that we create and apply in every case.
Yeah, a lot of cities and counties have standard conditions that they apply to every project, and we don't have that, but I feel like we should. For instance, our zoning code says permits expire if they're not vested within two years. I feel like that would be a good standard condition to put in. But yeah, in terms of, there's the conditions that let people know what they're already required or what the rules are versus the conditions that are changing the project or putting some additional burden that's not in the code on an applicant. So I think that's your question is doing that, does that put a set more, greater liability?
Yes.
Okay. And then it looks like we're out with Roberts' rules and in with Rosenberg's rules. And I, and I looked at the cheat sheet online for Rosenberg's rules and I, I like, I like them. I'm going to like this change. And I did notice one of the things to say if you want to bring a motion back in is, it was, "I make a motion to reconsider." I noted that, and so I think you're on the right track there. We should still get confirmation, but I believe that's the right wording. Go ahead, Commissioner Freitas.
Oh, I was just going to riff off of your question about, you know, are, are we putting ourselves at legal risk for making conditions? And I thought since we have a whole class here, we could talk about nexus and proportionality if the director would like to kind of explain that. Because, you know, conditions is partially why this body exists, but there is a line after which you need to be careful.
Right. So the condition has to have nexus to the project's impacts, you know? So if the project is, it's going to be reusing an existing building and we require them to like add a public accessway, and they're not doing anything additionally to block public access. There's no nexus between what they're doing and the need for a new public accessway. There's no, there's no project impact that results in the need for that condition. And then rough proportionality is that you look at the degree of impact of the project and you, and you don't go overboard with your condition. So if the project is going to bring like four new employees to an area, you don't make them pay for a whole new bike lane because there's, you know, they are going to be, you know, putting more of a burden on your existing bike lane, but not enough to require them to pay an absorbent amount of money to, you know, improve it. So it's about making the condition roughly proportional with the impact. My two commissioner planners can correct me if I'm wrong on those two, but.
No, yeah, I would, yeah, just say that that's where people have lost cases. Cases have been brought and people have lost if they require conditions that are out of proportion and have no connection to what the project is. And so as long as we stay away from that, I think we're on pretty good footing.
Great, thank you. Shall we hear a public comments on the bylaws? I'll start first online. Is there anyone online who would like to comment on these revisions to the bylaws? I know this is exciting stuff. I'm sure you have something to say. Okay, anyone in the house, in the chambers? Okay, can we see that motion again then?
My screen sharing is disabled. Which one is it? Oh, also a reminder that next, the bylaws were changed to reflect that we voted, that the commission voted to change the meeting date next month.
To Wednesdays?
To Wednesdays.
Second Wednesdays of the month, same time, same place?
Mm-hmm.
I'll go ahead and make this motion. I move the Planning Commission to amend the bylaws per staff's recommendations.
I'll second that motion. Any further discussions? Okay, let's put it to the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Abstentions? The motion carries. Okay, we are done with new business and now we're in letter H, directors' reports and communications. Would any directors like to speak on any issue or communicate?
I just wanted to remind everybody that there's a special meeting of the Planning Commission on the 23rd to review the proposed acquisition and development of a new public facility over at Ocean, on Ocean View Cemetery Land. And it's, the meeting's at 4:30, really, and correct me if I'm wrong. And we're expecting that Commissioner Freitas and Benson will not be in attendance. So I'm counting on the other three to be there. And we're in a tight situation with the SEQA document and public comment, but we'll still be getting, I'm anticipating getting the meeting agenda out with everything by the Friday before the meeting.
When does the public comment period end?
The public comment period ends on the 16th of October. That's it for me.
Much. I want to just bring one thing forward. I know this is quite a tiny pamphlet, but what it says is, "The welcoming for the boat, the Golden Rule." And so on Friday this week, the Golden Rule is going to be sailing into, to, to the harbor and, and be docked over at Woodley Island in one of the slips there. And I just want to say a few words about the Golden Rule. The, the Golden Rule was built in 1952 in Costa Rica out of Sapele wood and Purple Heart. And that's poetic to me because the veterans for peace now own the Golden Rule. Many of those people who have earned a Purple Heart, you know, for their, for their suffering in injury in service or have, have lost comrades who made the ultimate sacrifice. And the Golden Rule exists, it's the first, check this out, it's the first boat ever to engage, that was built to engage in environmental direct action in the world. So way before Greenpeace ever existed, in 1958, the Golden Rule existed. And guess where its home port is? Right here in Humboldt. So not only are we the first place to give lands back to indigenous people, to create a world-class marsh, to decommission a nuclear plant, and on and on and on. We're also the birthplace of, of the first vessel that, that exists to, to, to basically reduce nuclear proliferation and militarism around the world. So it's a, it's a, it's a peace ship. And, and one of the things that we offer in, in, in the bay is safe harbor. And I would think, and I really question whether we give safe harbor to the Golden Rule, if we were to use their own definition of safe harbor, would be a place that does not have nuclear proliferation. And so I'm, so, you know, as we all know, and I've spoken to this commission, that in 1980, we decommissioned the nuclear plant at King Salmon, but there are still 67 tons of spent nuclear rods. And we, and within the planning horizon of Eureka, we are also at risk. Should we have a tsunami of 44 feet, we will be Fukushima. And there's also 1,300 feet of erosion at Booner Point. And so there's several ways in which that, those casks could end up in the bay. So, so I would think the Golden Rule wouldn't necessarily consider this to be a safe harbor. So I'm just speaking to put this back on, on the radar. But I also, you know, lest I be accused of fear mongering, I want to give a really positive message to my colleagues at Cal Poly, and I'm a co-investigator in the 44-feet project, which was looking at safety of the, of the nuclear plant or sort of the decommissioned isthaci, where the, where the rods are stored relative to sea level rise. And we wrote reports and made comments to the California Public Utilities Commission for what's called the triennial proceeding for nuclear decommissioning. And, and because of that, PG&E's proposal now is that they have to do updated tsunami hazard and sea level rise assessments for the Humboldt Bay isthaci. And so that's, that got, created some traction. And, and that, and specifically, in order for them to be re-permitted to hold on to those rods, they have to include current information about tsunami genetic earthquakes. And so we're, a new word for me too, tsunami genetic earthquakes. And so, so that is, that's, that's good, that, that, that we will understand what we're up against as a community in that sense. So I'll just leave it at that. But the, but if you see the Golden Rule with its red sails with a peace sign on one of them, you'll know what it is. 30 feet long, 12 inch, 12, 12 feet wide, five feet in draft, and it's a, it's gaff-rigged fore and aft with a jib. And, and they're always welcome, they're always welcome people to come visit and say hello. If you say permission to come aboard, they will say yes and talk to you about anti-nuclear stuff and peace. Okay. Any other reports or communications?
Well, I feel compelled to say that which way the wind is going to be at the women's club on Sunday.
That happened yesterday.
Oh, that was, I missed it. So that was, so you went, I didn't. Okay.
I did, yeah.
I tried, but thanks for sharing that. And I didn't know that we had an event coming up on Friday, so that's great.
Yeah, and one of the things that was lovely is we heard stories at the women's club from three different people. And that ship has, sorry, that boat has been restored twice in Humboldt Bay. It was sunk right off of Woodley Island and raised. And so it has, it's, I mean, it's, it's, its story is so hopeful. It just keeps being reborn over and over again and continuing this mission, so. All right.
I have one unrelated communication. I am not planning to attend next month's meeting, as I will be a new mom. So I hope to talk to the director about how many Zoom meetings I can do before coming back, so. Keep me in your thoughts. Thank you.
All of our best and warmest wishes for, for a healthy mom and a healthy, healthy baby. Congratulations. Okay, no further business. We will adjourn.